Welcome everyone to downtown Bakersfield, Council Chambers and work session this evening. It is November twenty first, it's six P M. I've called this work session to order and Mr. Brown, if you would lead us in the indication please.
That's right. Father, I thank you tonight as well here together to work on the town's business. You brought us together for such a time for this. What I ask tonight of you is your wisdom that only you can give to work through the business for the people who have sent us here and I pray Lord that we make the decisions at the right near side to the benefit of the people we were elected to serve. It's in your name, the life, right?
Amen.
Stand for the pledge by Mr. Dan Brown, veteran and gentleman.
Let him do the pledge.
A pledge is to fight the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
First by Mr. Dan Brown, then a second. Say by Ms. Lemon, any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. Motion passes. New business idea by the presentation by the land plan group leading to engineering and design for future improvements to downtown business districts and town parks. At this time I'm going to turn the meeting over to Mr. Lafferty.
Thank you. Decided tonight to have Rick MacKinnon from the land plan groups out here. As y'all will remember, we started with what was a conceptual master plan for kind of the town as a whole, both downtown districts, the parks. Well, moving past that, we contracted with land plan groups out to move into the engineering and design phase of these projects. And in doing so, we held multiple stakeholder meetings, one in the Bakersburg Downtown Business District, one in the Leesville Downtown Business District, and we had multiple input sessions here. I think, I think a number of y'all attended those input sessions as well. So what they did was they took all the information from the stakeholder meetings, the kind of the conceptual design that they had initially come up with, and they put all that into designs and are now trying to work and get the drawings completed, but wanted to come tonight to let them present that to council as a body so that you can see what they've done and to make sure before the final stamp gets put on anything, there's not any major or significant changes that would need to be made to anything with regards to this. I will tell you, I've looked it over, I'm really impressed with what we see, with what I've seen, and I look forward to them, Rick showed it to y'all tonight. So Rick, come on up.
Mayor, Council, it's a pleasure to be here, see some familiar faces again. We've got fifty or so slides, so I'll try not to keep you here all night. If you have any questions, feel free to interrupt me whenever you want, we'll just keep it informal and talk through these slides as we go. So the master plan kind of focused in on the five project areas to get more detail and more development on. So the five we looked at, what we're showing you tonight are Wilson Depot Park, top ramp here, Pine Street Corner Parking Lot, the downtown Bakersburg District, College Park, and then the downtown Leesville District. So we'll go through each one of those fairly quickly. Here, Depot Park here, get you oriented, this is the existing depot building, existing playground area, you've got a couple of pavilions, this nice large pavilion, some smaller ones that needed a lot of work. The construction documents for both the park areas are about ninety, ninety-five percent complete. So what we're showing here is the existing depot building here, there's an expanded patio space, a new paved parking lot, we'll have a nice fenced playground area with a five to twelve age group, two to five age group here, splash pad area there, a new restroom building will be right here, renovate the existing pavilion, the large one, and the restroom building will have an open air picnic area that will replace the other two. So in the rendering, this is what that's going to look like. Again, the existing depot building, playground area, splash pad, a walking trail that has workout stations along the trail. Flip through these real quick with the three D model of the paved parking lot, you can see, this is from the other side, I think that's Howard Street looking back.
Currently, this park does not have a walking trail, nor does it even have a restroom facility unless you bring it to Depot Building's side. Wanted to mention that, not restroom.
Is there any physical separation between the two five and the five to twelve? I've had several parents concerned about the fact that for some reason in the hierarchy, the five to, the seven, eight, nine year olds like to sort of pick on the fathers in a park environment.
There's no physical like raised barrier, there's a sidewalk that separates the two areas, but that's something that if you'd like us to consider, certainly.
Something about handicap swings or anything like that?
Yes, this is all inclusive playground, this is strictly, it's meant for ADA accessibility. So the colored surfacing you see here?
Yeah, what's that most of the material?
That's the, or in place rubber surfacing. It's not cheap, but that's what you want. And this, these playground equipment pieces that you see are exactly what is spec'd in the plans currently, and they're from landscaped structures incorporated, really nice, good solid playground.
Trained.
Very trained, yes, yes. Even splash pad's going to have trained pieces in that. And quickly fly you through it, see if you can get a little better feel for it. See the restroom building? You gated access there.
Rick didn't do the fly three.
I have younger people in the office there.
How many lights are in that park?
Right off the top of my head, I couldn't tell you, but it would be lit per standards.
Well, I said a few, but.
Yeah.
Teddy, what are the hours of the park?
Car.
The garden.
Turn hours?
I think it ends.
It dark is when it's supposed to end.
It will be since the cleanup, y'all?
Yes.
We'll have a dog station.
Okay.
It's a little burn there, separate.
Rick, with regard to the parking, is it better to have paved parking or would it be finding a benefit in stuff like a grass paved or something like that?
Certainly could. I think that could help with some of the storm damage. So in order to get this to work, there is a small area of underground detention for this park. It'll be out in the grass field back there in the back. But we could certainly consider it, the grass paved is more expensive than.
That was my next question.
We'll move on to the second project area here, Pine Street Corner Parking Lot, as you can see the outline in red, and it includes resurfacing the alleyway down to railroad. CDs are again ninety percent complete for this project. Another little three D model shows you the images of what that's going to look like. Church Street, Pine Street. Again, the corner of Church and Pine.
So that's going to service Pine Street primarily. I don't see other than come out, come down church and go back. Access to Oak Street. No plans to take a building down or?
That's certainly a discussion that could be had. I know some cities are buying up buildings to turn around, download, to create that plaza walk.
Unfortunately, we just missed the tax sale.
Currently, no, there's not a plan for that, but that's certainly a discussion we could have.
Next project area, which kind of concludes that corner parking lot, is the rest of the downtown Bakersburg District. You see the outline again, red again, Fulmer Street, Oak Street, Pine Street, Railroad. CDs for these streetscapes, the DOT's corner kind of sets back a little bit, so they're closer to seventy percent at this point in time. What we're looking at is new sidewalks, have some brick pavers that are behind the curve, landscape areas. Oak Street proposing a mid block crosswalk period, they have some water feature or planter or sculpture. This is looking down Fulmer Street with a future water park area here. Looking down Oak Street, one way street, have some large plazas on the corners, some wall, seat walls and landscaping. Again, looking down Pine Street, parking lot there in the corner. This is the mid block crosswalk on Oak Street. See, we're showing a water feature, planter option on one side. Those could or could not happen, you know, it could be just an open plaza area with some inches, depending on, you know, cost, you know, that one water feature could be a hundred, two hundred thousand dollars depending on what you get.
Is that a strategic location for that or is it?
Traffic. Yes, so this will be a raised median, so a slope, gradually slope up to the crosswalk, street level crosswalk.
Did y'all throw a recommendation of some type in there regarding the one way of Oak Street to kind of show that, whether it's through decorative signage or, because I know y'all are bringing those corner medians out.
One way of Oak or one way of Fulmer?
Oak, what did I say?
You said Oak.
Yeah, we've one wayed, just thinking more of a decorative signage.
More to diverge, to make sure traffic.
To make sure there's a one way sign. Yes, definitely there.
But it's going to be a little better moving forward because those corner sidewalks will come out.
Exactly.
Versus sticking them out and the hats fall down.
That's exactly right, yes.
How many parking spaces are we using there?
For this crosswalk, I'm not sure I can give that number for you. I don't know if we lose any or not, to be honest, but we have to, we strive to.
You'll pick some up when you put the parking area up.
Yeah.
Yep. You see the brick behind the curb there? Scored concrete. What are you doing there? Tree planters? This is Pine Street. This is the.
That's Root Cellar on the corner there.
That's the end of Oak Street. See the handicap ramps, crosswalks. That's the end of Fulmer. Look at down railroad there.
Taking you for a ride.
What street is that? Where's that side street coming from?
On the sand down. You passed it early. They, they don't show anything for Woodward Park. So a separate project?
It is, yes sir.
Now we're going up, going up the wrong way.
Wrong way.
That's okay, we're flying.
Of course, if all the building facades look like that.
Big downtown, so it's a long movie, sorry.
I didn't want to say who's old, but they is.
Move down Pine Street.
Just stand up there.
Move up trouble.
That's more than farmers do.
Man, you couldn't superimpose the existing buildings. I'm going to give you a better look. We have no control over those buildings, so I mean, you know. Jack Ruth wants to take a hike?
Yes, sir. College Park, existing conditions, you've got hands auditorium, cafeteria building and college here. You've got three picnic pavilion pieces here, this one is having some issues, structural issues. We've got an architect, Jeff Lewis Architects on the team, he's studied those and we're going to renovate these two and probably need to replace that one. And then go ahead and jump into the CDs, again, ninety, ninety-five percent complete for this. See, here's your three pavilions here, a new playground here with again two to five, five to twelve area, a new restroom building here that have a little bit of a covered open area. Pretty good sized parking area, dumpsters, y'all paved.
Well, if I could say something on the dumpsters, that was one of our things, we have so many hurry curbies sitting out there all over the park just to, for people to try to put trash in, we wanted to create that dumpster area that could be hidden where we don't have to have all the hurry curbies out there.
How are we rendering up this project? How many parking spaces are we looking at there? Question.
That's what's in there.
Yeah, but we don't have lines to park in, nobody parks close to.
You can have forty, forty-five.
That's, that's around fifty spots.
So the new restroom building's here, new playground, we'll give walking path with some picnic tables, some shade trees, picnic pavilions. So three, that corner of the two to five area, this, we're showing the rubber surfacing in the two to five area and the mulch and the five to twelve, the cost is factored there. I'd love to see a new boat and rubber surfacing, but I understand it's expensive.
And that mulch, when you say mulch, it's not loose mulch?
No, it's the, it's the wood fiber mulch, it's playground, it's ADA accessible. But it is a loose material that takes more maintenance after maintaining it yearly. Used to the playground, this is the actual playground equipment that is specified on the plans. Really excited for the playground area. Handicap swings, again, this is another all inclusive playground. Sun's getting low, there's a shot of the new restroom building, the architecture's kind of resemble the college brick and kid booth, you can see the benches scattered.
That's a wonderful question. More than what we have.
Yep.
And again, that's one of the concerns that I've brought up to Rick myself, and you know, they're showing diagrams with all that, but certainly we can lower the maintenance responsibilities if we need to.
That's right.
This does not address the stage area.
You need to talk about that.
That's going to be the way it is.
I mean, that's certainly something we could go back and look at adding and updating if we wanted to.
Generally, right now, it's in pretty good condition, correct?
It is, I mean, we don't have issues with it at this time, I mean, if there was certainly something we were looking that we wanted to do with it, we could, we could look at that.
Are we going to remove the old equipment on the walk track?
You talking about the fitness?
Yeah. Don't think they work.
We recently fixed all the ones that weren't working.
One round the wall.
So we're now moved to downtown Leesville, we're looking at of course Main Street and then also railroad, two blocks there. Again, streets hit, construction documents are again about the seventy percent level. Rendering, median, we've kept it pretty much the same, a median, we still have a median in the middle, have some trees in it, it's going to be a hard surface though, so you'll still be able to walk across it anywhere throughout the block. Showing a little seat wall at the gateway, little Main Street sign on it. And then the brick behind the sidewalks, lights and trees. Looking down railroad, this really helps formalize that parking along railroad corridor.
Like the handicap access points.
Yeah, we all be thinking that.
Where do you, where do you stop lights, I don't see a stop light.
They were up to.
Tracy going to the park.
Teddy coming out of burry.
I think he's walking too straight for that.
Seen a lot of pretty pictures, now we can see a kind of ugly picture of the budget. And so we just wanted to just show you these, and these are, wouldn't say rough, it'll be in the ballpark, but once all the construction documents are a hundred percent, we can get a better idea. These numbers are based on, we probably had ten bid openings in the last three months, so we, kind of the current construction dollars, and that's what these are looking, looking like. Wilson Depot, two point four to two point six. Pine Street Corner Parking Lot, it's more manageable, four hundred thousand, four fifty, somewhere in that range. Downtown Bakersburg, four and a half to four point eight. College Park, looking at two point one to two point three. And then downtown Leesville, two point two to two point four range. Everybody's brought the checkbook tonight.
So now twelve, thirteen million dollars.
Where can we start?
I was wondering.
A hundred year bond.
Okay, this does not include the auditorium, College Park auditorium, and does not include Woodward Park.
Woodwards getting ready to kick off, and they, they at this point have not been contracted or hired to do any home auditorium or bit, to take your purpose. This was just the two downtowns and the two parks, Woodward upcoming.
That's all we got tonight.
Could you sleep there for a little bit more? Good picture.
Can you count it out?
Can't count that out. I can't count that out.
Twelve to thirteen.
Ten point three, ten point eight.
And I just went with the higher of the two on everyone.
Yeah.
We had noticed there is, prices are trending down, you know, construction dollars, so that's a good sign to see all of that last.
So right now, is there even any contractors available to do work?
Yeah, that's another thing, it's tough to get leadership, mine's pretty busy. But these would be attractive projects, I think we'd be able to get.
They have a two year window to operate on this kind of pricing, two years from now. Interest rates will start dropping and building will pick back up.
I'll just say, I think moving forward, you know, when we get to that point, Woodwards done, and we get to that point of looking at getting a bond attorney and starting to prioritize and figure out how much we can bond and get done, you know, hopefully by that point, we will still have this trend of prices coming down a little bit, because it's really tough right now to go out and bid a lot of this work with prices so high, because you're not going to get near the bank for it.
But you've got lines coming this way, prices this way, lines coming that way, probably equal out.
Any questions, comments, or feedback on what council members have seen tonight?
It looks nice.
I've just got one generic question, I know y'all, did y'all get into plant selection and stuff like that, obviously you've got some in your rendering and stuff, you've got ideas, but.
Yeah, what we'd love to do is work with you guys, because I know everybody has somebody in town that knows plants or has a certain.
We had somebody adamant about palm trees everywhere.
Well, I'm, I'm just thinking, you know, as far as maintenance, in my mind, as low maintenance as possible.
You think about maintenance, artificial. We've got some pretty good looking stuff.
I love the look of water features, I don't like the, I don't like the maintenance issues with water features. They're beautiful if you can keep them up, keep people from vandalizing them.
Like you said, the water features, that's one of those optional things. With a tree on.
I'm fine with that, that's just one of those things that.
Someone come along and follow the dawn.
I mean, like.
It would be dawn.
For St. Patrick's, five points turns their fountain green, but they've got to maintain it the rest of the year and, you know, so, and I like the idea of.
In the state of Illinois.
Sculpture.
Yep.
So, I mean. I love the designs, none of us love the price, but that is what it is.
It's funny, specific plant material, we haven't sat down with anybody, we'd like to make a recommendation on what we think is recommended, but if somebody has some strong feelings about other plant, obviously it's like taking that walk.
Thing concerns me is maintenance and upkeeps us. I hear what you say.
He's saying to get for plants, get potato vines.
Well, yeah. Trees don't grow. That was five. That would, uh, but those five would almost require a full-time employee.
Yeah.
Or, or, you know, if you hire them.
Hire them on season.
The hire-out season. That's right, pay. First of all, before. A lot of towns just contract.
You need used prisoners up? Oh, my. We used to.
No, you can't.
A lot of things we don't do that we used to do.
They're gonna get somebody.
We can't, yes, CDAT can.
Yes, sir.
But you can't.
Not only that, if I recall, uh, they own all that. They're responsible for maintenance, Directive twenty-eight. Says you. You directed from Christie's Hall says that, uh, that CDAT shall be responsible for maintenance on their properties. We have a question about the sidewalks.
So, so back to sidewalks, um, I know that one thing that was discussed at City County Manager's, uh, legislative update that we went to was. One of the things you need to ensure when you're, when you're redoing a DOT sidewalk or, or something like that, there's a letter that needs to be provided that says, while we improve this.
We don't.
We don't own or assume liability or responsibility for it moving forward. And that was one thing Eric Scheidel, who is the M A S E, uh, on staff legal guy, he, I mean, he was pretty adamant that if you're, if you're gonna go in your downtowns and you're gonna fix the sidewalks and you're gonna do stuff, make sure that letter.
Accompany's every.
Accompany's everything that you do, that, that, that they have ownership of. So, that's something, as we do this project, we'll work through, we'll probably, you can talk to Eric Scheidel and Chris, and we'll, we'll make sure we got this wording right, but that we put that in DOT's hands. And y'all bet with DOT and.
That's right.
Gone through all this to make sure that they use their standards.
Absolutely.
How wide are those sidewalks?
Uh, right off the top of my head, I cannot remember.
A little larger than they are now.
Right, they're either exactly the same as they are now, or another foot, another half foot or a foot wider. No, we didn't, we didn't shrink any sidewalks.
You know, the brick pavers, one of my concerns was, a lot of times when you do brick pavers, you end up with bricks that are all kinds of trip hazards moving forward. The way y'all are proposing to do it is it would actually be a concrete, a tree. Culvert, it's, the bricks would be put into that with mortar in, so that the bricks can't sink.
Be no settling, yeah.
Ran into those problems over here.
Yep. Because that was one of our concerns when we first saw the brick pavers, it's like, man, what are we gonna do to prevent the trip hazards moving forward?
And I've seen this done, where they put the cement down and then they do the brick on top. Yeah.
Another idea that was recently sent to me, uh, I think, I'll, I'll tell you, Gary Morgan texted me a picture, and it was those lights, I think I sent it to you, that are in the ground underneath the trees, that you can change the colors. So if it's breast cancer awareness month, you can reflect the trees pink, or if it's Fourth of July, you can change it to red, white, and blue, and you can change the color of your trees in your downtown district. Something like that would be interesting.
So Clemson versus Carolina, you can turn them orange.
They would all be. They would all be on it.
They can't, they can't make garnish.
Spark and seed dirt?
Uh, no spark and seed dirt? Last question.
Well, the ox is a bull.
But from yours.
Figure out what shizen is.
Which one of those would be the best one to start with?
So, so here, so with regards to the, the financial, with regards to financial and prioritization, with Woodard still outstanding, and, and, and to get that done, we need to get that cost estimate so that we can throw it into the mix. I mean, I hope that we can go after full funding for Woodard in the end, um, and have that paid for. But once that's engineered, our goal is to, to bring the bond attorney on, let's start looking at our ex-tax revenues, getting an idea of what we can spend. And at that point, we're just gonna have to pull each of these and look at, what do we want to prioritize for each one? Because I don't believe we're gonna be able to do all this at the same time, this is gonna be a phased approach.
But the one revenue generator that's not been addressed. The obituary, that was in the original package, correct?
It was, and, and y'all, don't tell nobody we're like.
Boudreaux.
Boudreaux Group, you know, architects.
But that's the one revenue, I mean, obviously, we feel the fiscal generate long-term revenue because it'll attract people, um, but.
And if, if y'all wanted, the, the master plan concept discussed Hanes Auditorium, and it was a concept, what we moved forward with from an engineering and design standpoint were the parts of downtowns. If y'all want to have a discussion about going ahead, moving forward, and doing that full-fledged improvement, engineering and design for Hanes, we could get a cost to, to get that done and see what it would cost through Rick and him and the Boudreaux Group to get that project engineered and designed. And, I mean, we could, we could come back to the table with a cost for that, that's what I'm saying, if y'all would like us to get a cost.
I, I, I got something to say. I do like all these. But I think the entrance to our town needs to be something done, so it is attractive.
We got about nine oh.
I gotta get my steps straight.
Coming from Lexington?
Yes. Yes. I mean, because when I go into a town and the entrance to that town is, I can't wait to see what the town looks like. That's me.
You're speaking signage or personal pri- private property situations?
I'm talking about like, up there in the corner, like the, the.
Ozil?
Plant something, yeah, something there, I mean, it just like in Lexington.
Entrance?
Yeah.
A gateway entrance?
Yeah.
Well, wait till they finish the.
Well, yeah, you'd have to, yeah.
Pourline project and whether.
Yeah, I realize that.
Yeah.
Questions, comments?
Yeah, that's awesome.
I wanna say one problem with the whole project. Yeah, that's how the heck we're gonna play.
Uh, motion to adjourn, if anyone, anyone's ready to discuss.
So, uh.
Say it to us.
All favorates right in, we are adjourned.